Good evening and welcome to the July 2nd, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here, I would like to address council, please talk to staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to council. Like just some is three minutes on our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Worsom with Lebanon Christian Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of the city council. Thank you for your service to our community and thank you for providing me with the opportunity to minister to you by offering the invocation to tonight's city council meeting. Please join me in prayer. Dear God, our heavenly Father, all praise, glory, and honor are yours. We thank you for your mercy and grace, and we humble ourselves before you. Lord, I thank you for our mayor and the members of our city council who oversee our city of Newport News. They seek to lead and to serve our community and its citizens in ways that are beneficial to all. Lord, tonight, I pray that you will bless Mayor Jones and the members of our city council with wisdom. Give them direction as they conduct tonight's business. Guide them in whatever decisions they may need to make tonight. Lord, I thank you for their service and the sacrifices they make to ensure that our community is a great place to live, to raise a family, and to earn a living. And may each of us as citizens do our part in giving back to our community in whatever ways that we can. May we each treat each and every member of our community with kindness, respect, and love. Bless us and keep us safe, I pray. Amen.
Please join me as we recite the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Hill, husband of Dr. Bethune Hill, along with family, friends, members of city council, as well as all of the sorority sisters in attendance, to please come to the podium. Yep, feel free to come to the podium as well.
Yeah, come on, council.
Yeah.
You, sir?
I know you, vice mayor, because it's his hand. Just hold it next to you.
Thank you, man.
Yeah.
We got no space?
Yeah, we have, we have that space. This is important, this is the most important thing we do tonight. And we can, we can wrap it around, no worries.
Scoot on down here. Come all the way down here?
We have a, we have a strong showing of the, the links and all of the deltas and the omegas, so. We're among good people. As we all come up on the stage, I'm going to, to read the resolution in memoriam for Dr. Golden Bethune Hill. Whereas the council of the city of Newport News, Virginia, records with deep and profound sadness the death of Dr. Golden Bethune Hill. And whereas Dr. Golden Bethune Hill was a graduate of George W. Carver High School in Newport News and furthered her education by earning a V S in nursing, North Carolina A and T, and M S in nursing from V C U, as well as completing the Nurses Executive Fellowship Program at the Wharton School at U Penn. And whereas Dr. Golden Bethune Hill began her distinguished career as a staff nurse at Montefiore Medical Center in New York, and thereafter became the first African-American Director of Nursing at Riverside Regional Medical Center in Newport News. And whereas, following a number of leadership roles in New Jersey and Lynchburg, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill ultimately returned to Newport News in 2005 to become the very first African-American Executive President of Riverside Health System, and later Chief Executive Riverside Regional Medical Center, where she remained until her retirement in 2010. And whereas, beyond the walls of the hospital, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill recognized the need to improve healthcare for underserved individuals and families, co-founding the Newport News Community Free Clinic in 2010, which was later renamed the Charlie W. and Golden Bethune Hill Community Health Clinic in her honor. And whereas, in addition to her professional accomplishments, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill was a tireless advocate for social justice, participating as the lead plaintiff in Bethune Hill v. Virginia State Board of Elections, cementing her place in the history of civil rights movement. And whereas, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill was a pillar of the community and served in various leadership roles within organizations such as the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and the Links Incorporated. And whereas, as a champion of education, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill established the Dorothy McDaniel Scholarship at Hampton University for students in single-parent homes in honor of her mother. Whereas, guided through her life by her faith, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill enjoyed worship and fellowship with her community at Carver Memorial Church in Newport News, where she served as both a deacon and an elder. And whereas, Dr. Golden Bethune Hill was preceded in death by her first husband Vernon, and we fondly remembered and dearly missed by her loving husband, Charlie W. Hill, our fraternity brother, her daughters, Bracine, Caroline, Charlene, and Verna, and their families and numerous friends and family members. And whereas, the product of her professional and civic activities touched the lives of many, and the death of Dr. Golden Bethune Hill creates a void in this community that this council wishes to recognizes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Newport News, Virginia, that it hereby recognizes all that Dr. Golden Bethune Hill has done to serve the city of Newport News and her Commonwealth, and honors her for her service to this community, that it is ordered that the city clerk shall record this resolution in the minutes of this body, and that a copy be presented to the family of the late Dr. Golden Bethune Hill, that this resolution shall be in effect, and if the date of this adoption, June 11th, 2024, given under my hand, Mayor Philip Jones, City of the Newport News.
Mayor Jones, council, other city officials, friends of Newport News, we're very happy about this, and we're happy enough to share with you some other things that I'd like for you to know. This is a very special week, not just because of this, this is a very special week because Golden's birthday is July 4th, and we will be celebrating that in a very special way. The other thing that's very important is that one of the things that we had in mind when we established a prostate cancer group for dealing with prostate cancer cases, and that was before the clinic. So the plan was to do the prostate cancer training before the clinic, then the clinic, and then bring them together. Our plan is still to do that. So we will be announcing fairly soon and talking a lot about the first set of guidelines for prostate cancer for black men. And let me repeat this, the first set of national guidelines for treating prostate cancer for black men. And we want, we want every citizen of Newport News, frankly, every citizen of Hampton Roads and even Virginia, to understand that those guidelines are brand new. We finished working on those within the last couple of months. Chances are, most of you have not heard about them. And if you want to know more about them before we talk, just Google guidelines for prostate cancer with black men, and you will find that those rules are ready for adoption, and we look forward to continuing. So this is ending one phase and starting a brand-new phase, and we appreciate the support from the deltas and the links and all others who are interested in what we do. And I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
A lot of us, we just get close for the photo. I think Brett's taken. As long as you can see Pat. Make sure you don't have to front him. Two seconds, alright. Thanks, Brett.
One more time?
Perfect, thank you all.
Good to see you.
Why we don't have a photographer? The school sisters, who's that photographer?
You want a photographer?
See you later.
Hi, how you doing?
I know there's a lot of speakers here to speak on one item, so we're going to actually
Thank you so much.
make a motion to depart from the order of business, and I would like to move the collective
Yes.
He was.
bargaining task force to the front.
That man, he's still going strong.
So I hereby move that we depart from the order of the business set forth in the agenda
I saw him coming in here.
Master Barber? To see you.
and take up item G1 regarding a resolution to establish a collective bargaining task
I may really got it.
force at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 172, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to adopt a resolution to establish a collective bargaining task force. In 2020, the Virginia Journal Assembly amended Section 40.1-57.2 of the code allowing localities to adopt ordinances enabling collective bargaining with labor unions or employee associations within specified legal constraints. This change has prompted interest from employee associations to organize parts of the city workforce under collective bargaining agreements. City council is establishing a task force of stakeholders to study the scope of collective bargaining and the number of collective bargaining units. I recommend that council take appropriate action.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
We have a lot. Let's do this. So first, we're going to start with Doris Kraus-Maze. And as a reminder, there's a lot of speakers, if you could just keep to the, the time limit. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. First of all, let me just say, I want to commend each and every one of you. This is historical. You taking collective bargaining up and establishing a task force. It is just historical. And I would just say that in terms of the task force, it lays out the process. Sometimes we have a tendency to want to get too much in the weeds, which would be the actual collective bargaining agreement. So I would just say that to everyone, that it's a process in the sense of laying everything out. Yesterday, I had the honor and the privilege for being in the city of Richmond, along with Mayor Stony, where the workers signed their first agreement went into effect yesterday. Because if workers want a union, they should have a union. And it's left up to the workers, and it shouldn't be left up to anyone else in this democracy. So I will just say, I don't, I know everybody's not going to be speaking, but we do have a lot of people here, so if I could, I would just end by saying, I would like for all of the labor people to please stand to show their support, so that you all know that you have a lot of backing behind you, and if you need us, we're here. Come on. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Jason Parker? After Jason Parker will be James Sweeten.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Jason Parker, Virginia State Building Construction Trades Council. You know, a fundamental right of workers is to organize, and I, I called y'all in high regard for taking this up. This is a moment, this is a moment for workers, and those of us in leadership and labor have been working very hard since 2020, which was mentioned, and I think that these small wins are beginning to show the nature of what is needed by the workers that make this city function. And we appreciate what they do, and they deserve to have a right to be a just cause employee under a collective bargaining agreement, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have James Sweeten and then Paul Truho. James Sweeten and then Paul Truho.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you all doing? Thank you all for having me here, you know.
Good evening, Patricia.
I'm also grateful for all the coworkers I see out here. You know, I'm here to speak on as much as what, being grateful that collective bargaining is on the table today. You know, I worked, work around a lot of these people, and I know how hard they work. I go throughout the city, and I'm very proud of what I see. You know, I see a lot of good things in the city of Newport News. However, you know, I'm, I'm a third-generation guy from the, my family worked for the city. Grandfather retired, brother-in-law retired. And one thing I picked up on was, you know, I always heard them say, you know, I'm putting there in one bag, picking up another. And I didn't fully understand it until I became part of the city. And what they meant about that is, they just couldn't work at the city and make ends meet. They always had to have that part-time job. You know, I have some veteran coworkers out here. I heard them say, hey, I'm asking, what you gonna do? Oh, I gotta go to another job. You know, and I know that the city loved their public works department. Now, for me, it's time to show it, because it's basically, well, not only are we working two jobs, but it's a trickle-down effect, because in the morning, when you're coming in, you're tired, and anything is subject to happen, you're driving a vehicle, all you do is blink, you ran into the back. So someone is gonna pay the costs, one way or another, you know. So for me to know that collective bargaining is on the table today, I'm very grateful, and I hope and pray that you all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul Truho and then Adrian Manning.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Paul Truho. I am with Teamsters Local 822. I'm also a UPS worker here in Newport News. I do have the, the enviable position within my role of the Teamsters is I manage a $12 million a year grant that we run for the federal government around safety training. And one of the greatest benefits that I see on a day-to-day basis around union members, union workers, is union workers work safer, they take more pride in their jobs, it's more reflective that it's a career for them and not a one-off job. We've been seeing in the, over the past few years, this great resignation and this, this, this trend of workers walking away from jobs. We don't see that same trend in unions. Union members are committed to their jobs, are committed to their cities, and giving them the opportunity to organize, giving them some voice in their workplace will pay dividends for years to come, and I applaud the, the city for taking this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Manning and then Aaron Woodard.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Adrian Manning. I represent the International Association of Firefighters, Local 794, here in Newport News. Our firefighters proudly serve and protect this city every day, putting their lives on the line. We stand before you today requesting the formation of the collective bargaining task force. This task force would be crucial in ensuring the strong working relationship that we currently have between the city and our valued firefighters. It would allow open and honest communication regarding our working conditions, wages, and benefits. A collective bargaining task force would benefit not only our firefighters, but also the city as a whole. By working together, we can create a safer, more efficient fire department that better serves the citizens of Newport News. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request.
Thanks.
It'll be Aaron Woodard and then Adam Morau and then Mary Voss.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Aaron Woodard. I'm the president of International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, DOMASOL, here at 552 Industrial Park Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I just want to applaud the actions of the committee for supporting collective bargaining for city workers. It's a nationally protected right, you know, we thought we had this covered back with the Wagner Act, but, you know, the, the state legislator sees necessary to have individual cities vote on this. But I applaud you guys for taking the first step towards collective bargaining for all the, the workers and workers' rights here in the city of Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Morau and then Mary Voss, and we could use both mics if we want to alternate it.
Hello. Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Jones, my fellow citizens of Newport News. My name is Adam Morrow. I'm a resident of Newport News, unfortunately not currently represented by any unions, but I'd just like to share my support for the collective bargaining task force and my sincere hope that it, I read the agenda item, and I noticed it said "may" include members of the, um, union, of the unions or potential unions, and I just want to express my sincere support of the city of Newport News's commitment to collective bargaining and hope that this task force does include representatives of the workers and of the workers' unions. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. We'll do Mary Voss and then Tyler Eldredin.
Hello, Mary Voss, 350 Williamsburg Court. Good evening, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany, and city council members. I'm a Newport News resident and secretary of the Newport News Education Association, the union for educators and school workers in Newport News Public Schools. We have a number of NNEA and VEA members in attendance tonight in support of the collective bargaining task force, including NNEA President Dr. James Graves and VEA District Pete President Andy Kason. The NNEA is pursuing collective bargaining rights with the Newport News School Board, and we stand in solidarity with collective bargaining rights for Newport News city employees. We look forward to supporting Newport News city employees as they pursue and hopefully win collective bargaining rights. Tonight, please in vote, please vote in favor of the collective bargaining task force recommended by the city manager. It is very important that the task force includes union members. In the language of the collective bargaining task force resolution, some of us noticed that it appeared that union members' participation in the task force is a "may" instead of a "must." And so we strongly encourage you to include union members on the task force. Workers are a critical part of the collective bargaining process, so we need to be a part of the task force, too. Without union members, there is a risk of the task force devolving into excuses not to approve collective bargaining. A reminder that most public employees in the United States already have the right to negotiate their contracts. The South is an anomaly in historically attempting to block collective bargaining rights, which is a vestige of Jim Crow. Hopefully, we can all agree that our hard-working Newport News public sector employees deserve the labor rights that most public sector workers across the country already enjoy. Collective bargaining rights, also known as contract negotiations, allow employees a seat at the table to negotiate for stronger contracts, including better working conditions, pay, and benefits. Collective bargaining is benefit, beneficial to city leadership as well. City employees in the trenches, such as firefighters, EMTs, police officers, social workers, and so on, often have great ideas on how to improve their job sites and how to make their departments more effective and efficient, leading to more satisfaction.
please vote, please vote in favor of the Collective Bargaining Task Force recommended by the city manager. It is very important that the task force includes union members. In the language of the Collective Bargaining Task Force resolution, some of us noticed that it appeared that union members' participation in the task force is a may instead of a must. And so we strongly encourage you to include union members on the task force. Workers are a critical part of the collective bargaining process, so we need to be a part of the task force too. Without union members, there is a risk of the task force devolving into excuses not to approve collective bargaining. A reminder that most public employees in the United States already have the right to negotiate their contracts. The South is an anomaly in historically attempting to block collective bargaining rights, which is a vestige of Jim Crow. Hopefully, we can all agree that our hard-working Newport News public sector employees deserve the labor rights that most public sector workers across the country already enjoy. Collective bargaining rights, also known as contract negotiations, allow employees a seat at the table to negotiate for stronger contracts, including better working conditions, pay, and benefits. Collective bargaining is beneficial to city leadership as well. City employees in the trenches such as firefighters, EMTs, police officers, social workers, and so on, often have great ideas on how to improve their job sites and how to make their departments more effective and efficient, leading to more satisfied employees, which in turn will lead to better recruitment and retention of well-qualified workers. Become the first city on the peninsula to approve collective bargaining for city workers, and watch how well-qualified candidates flock to the city of Newport News to live and work and raise families. Thank you for supporting our hard-working public sector employees in Newport News by voting yes tonight on the Collective Bargaining Task Force. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll do Tyler Eldred, and then Chris Hollis.
My name is Tyler Eldred. I'm an organizer with Tidewater DSA and a former resident of Newport News. I remember being before this council discussing collective bargaining a couple of years ago, still in the throes of the pandemic. I remember hearing stories from Newport News city workers about how they risked their lives just by showing up to work each day, facing long, thankless hours, racial discrimination with little meaningful recourse, rising housing costs that they have to take on a second job just to keep ahead of. Despite all this, they've shown up to keep this city running, keeping your water clean, all your trash picked up and hauled away, helping your neighbors with technology, and helping your children with their spelling. They've been doing their job this entire time. I commend the city councils for taking on this resolution, but I wonder what this council has been doing this entire time. Portsmouth has passed a collective bargaining resolution. Richmond has passed a collective bargaining resolution. Virginia Beach has, already has their task force. So I urge this city council to show and ounce the same courage that all the people that employs has been shown by, for a long time, by delivering exceptional service in the face of exceptional adversity, by showing your commitment to collective bargaining tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go Chris Hollis, then Keith Graham, then Alvin Long.
Hello, city council, mayor, city manager, vice mayor, and everyone that's taken their time out to be here today. My name is Chris Hollis, and stay off of 5600 Lowry Road. I'm here today because these workers, and can we get every city worker to stand up just one more time? I know your legs are tired, y'all been standing all day. But I just want the council to understand that these workers, firefighters, public works workers, public utility workers, they all risk their lives every day, hazardous, facing hazards on the job, to make sure that your trash is picked up, to make sure that your water is running when you're taking a shower, or when you're washing the dishes, to make sure that your streets are repaired every day, where you don't damage your wheels, you know, going down the street. That's their life, and that's their job. It's committed to the city. During the COVID shutdown, when everybody was at home, they had to go to work. A lot of them weren't even compensated, you know, during that time. But they continue to do their job. These are the ones that keep your city running each and every day. They don't complain. They just do, do the work that needs to be done. I would like to commend the council today, because what you all are doing is putting you in the limelight of being champions. Can anyone tell me what happened April the 4th, 1968? I'll tell you. A great man fell, Dr. Martin Luther King, in Memphis, Tennessee, when he stood up for sanitation workers. Two of them died on the job by using hazardous equipment. He gave his life for these workers. These workers are in turn giving their lives every day to you, every day. There's not promise that they're gonna come home to their family. But we went through the Collective Bargaining Task Force in Virginia Beach. It was an eight-week process. A lot was learned. Framework was built. We talked about wages, negotiation of wages, working conditions, grievance policies. A lot of these workers are getting trapped off on the job, if I can use that term. Didn't really do anything to deserve to lose their job. Their families are struggling because they don't even have a voice. We're hoping that this collective bargaining task force can give workers the voice that they need to raise their concerns and their issues on the job. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you. And please take a look at your workers who are working hard every day to make sure your city continues to function. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess a short guy for last, we gotta bring this down. How everybody doing? Councilman, mayor, thank y'all for having me, our opportunity to come up here. My name is Keith Graham. I've been with Public Works Stonewall Division for 10 years. We maintain the infrastructure of the city. If it's a hurricane, snowstorm, the police department, they can't go fight crime. We gotta clear the roads. The fire department can't save nobody because we gotta clear the roads. And I know that a lot of people don't know that we got personal issues at home. So when them storms break out, my family is second. Public works is first. So only thing we asking for is a seat at the table so we can share our concerns, or hopefully, we can collaborate to some for these workers here. So we don't, when I'm on the job, they complaining, complaining, and complaining, you know. So all the time I'm asking y'all for, consider and vote for the Collective Bargain Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Long, and then Randy Dillard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Al Long. I'm a retired electronics and IT worker. And I'm here tonight representing the Southern Workers Assembly in our Tidewater branch. Southern Workers Assembly organizes rank-and-file workers across the South for many different industries, both union and non-union. We have dock workers, we have farm workers, we have electrical workers, we have truck drivers, and communication workers, educators, literally every type of industry and employment in the South. But the backbone of our organization, the people that created it, were primarily the city workers, that the UE union, which is represented here tonight, the UE union is organized all across the state of North Carolina, without even having any collective bargaining rights. So I really want to congratulate you on considering collective bargaining in Newport News and setting up a task force to get that done. I also hope, as other speakers have mentioned, that you make sure that rank-and-file workers selected by their fellow employees are included on that task force. But I really want to stress one of these, one of the extra benefits of collective bargaining, because collective bargaining has accomplished a lot in breaking down the wage differences between workers who are in the private sector and workers who are in the public sector. And when you have workers in the public sector who are not paid as much, don't have the same benefits as workers in the private sector, they tend not to stick around. That costs you money. That costs the residents of your city who don't have the workers available they need to do the work they need done. So it's very important that collective bargaining can help break down those barriers. And the other, the other, the other barrier that collective bargaining can overcome is for the people that have experienced past discrimination and wage differences based on race and sex and national origin and gender discrimination, and all the different forms of discrimination that have existed historically in this country. Collective bargaining, in general, boosts pay rates by five to eight percent over people that are not unionized. But it's especially important for women and members of oppressed minorities who have got this historical pay gaps. Collective bargaining is very important for being able to overcome those pay gaps and make sure that everybody has the same equal rights as they work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy Dillard, and then Jennifer Naparilla. Sorry if I messed that up.
Good evening, members of city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. I am here today to thank you for taking up the subject of collective bargaining for the employees of the city of Newport News. I'm a native of Newport News. I'm a third-generation person affiliated with labor in my family. My grandfather helped start the Peninsula Shipbuilding Association. That was before integration, and the African-American workers at the shipyard couldn't join the union at the shipyard. My father was the state president for the National Association of Letter Carriers. But I'm here today to say that with union wages, you help strengthen and build the middle class. You help allow our citizens in the city of Newport News to send their kids to college, or to do other things that they need to do, and to also become homeowners and better citizens of the city of Newport News. I thank you for taking up this task force issue today, and I appreciate everything that you do for the city of Newport News.
Thank you. After Jennifer, we'll have Zully Panada.
Good evening, mayor and city council.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Naparilla. I'm actually a resident of Chesapeake. And when I was on my way here, I was going to spend my time talking about the importance of what you're doing, and thanking you for your consideration of this objective, which is absolutely vital. But listening to some of the speakers, I want to focus that a little bit more. It sounds as if the language in the proposal doesn't insist on having a union member present. And I want to talk about the consequence of that as a union member. So I'm a classroom teacher. I've been a classroom teacher for 23 years. And I'm entrusted with students' lives all the time. These guys who do city works, they're entrusted with the citizens' lives, the police force, the fire department. All of those folks are in part responsible for keeping people safe and okay. We have the ability and the intelligence and the empathy to speak for ourselves. You have to let union reps speak on union members' behalf. Otherwise, it's just more of the same, which is, you're doing a great job, keep going, and patting us on the head and telling us how important we are. But unless we're there to speak for ourselves, it doesn't mean, I don't want to dismiss it by saying it doesn't mean anything, but it's a kick in the teeth. We have brains, and we need to be able to speak for ourselves. That's, I guess, all I have. Thank you.
Zully Panada, and then Jesse Robertson, and then Chris Puckett, and then Curtis. And that'll be the end of it.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Sully Panada, and I am a member and representative for the Laborers International Union of North America, also known as LIUNA. And first, I want to applaud you in taking the first step into introducing this task force and, you know, eventually giving workers the right to collectively bargain. This is about what is fair, and giving workers a voice on their job, so that they can also be a part of the conversation, how to improve their working conditions and their pay. This is about, again, fairness, giving working-class families in this community stability, which, as we all know, stability in turn gives the next generation, the children of those working-class families, a better, higher rate of success, so that they can go on to college or join a trade. And again, just to be successful, not just to survive, but to thrive. So I encourage you all on the council to vote yes on this task force, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jesse Robertson? And then Chris Puckett, if we could have the other mic, and then Curtis Hartsfield.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
Jesse Robertson. I've been a resident of Newport News since 2012. And the thing that I have noticed is that sign that says we're hiring never seems to come down on 17. And I'd like to see that come down. And I think that this is a good step towards finally making jobs in Newport News at the city level a good career that people stick with, that they don't vacate as soon as another job comes up. It might be just a little bit better. So I thank you for taking up the issue of this task force, and I look forward to having all the better city services for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Chris Puckett. I've been in Newport News most of my life. I'm still in Newport News with the shipyard, and I'm also with the steelworkers, Local 8888. Since my first breath, I've been benefited to a collective bargaining. As an adult, I continue to improve my life through collective bargaining. I've had the opportunity to have a feeling that only union people in here know, that they negotiated language, and language was put into that collective bargaining to improve my life on a daily basis. So you hear a lot of things, a lot of things people have said, it's been common. It's a right. It's our right to organize. It's our right to have our voices. It's our right for us to be protected. Anytime you see a union, you're gonna see safer working conditions, better pay, less turnover, better product. Unions do nothing but improve. Collective bargaining does nothing to improve not only this city, but this country as a whole. It's an important part of legislation, and I hope you're taking this serious and realize how important y'all's decision is today. I've been proud of Newport News. Hopefully today, I can continue to be proud of the city of Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Curtis Hartsfield will bring us on.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council, mayor. Appreciate it. Good to see all of you guys here. I know each and every one of y'all already worked for this city. You guys work hard, same like we do. We all serve, and we're all here, and we're all called to serve. My name is Curtis Hartsfield, resident of Newport News, 1001 Center Avenue. Just going in 30 seconds. This initiative, task force, is very beneficial and will be. It'll help give us a voice for the front lines, express our concerns, allow us to discuss hazard pay, as Miriam and some of the other people speaking tonight, allow us to be a part of this demographic process. It'll also, like everybody was saying about the language, we do need to be a part of it to show some representation on our side. So, hey, you can actually hear some of the issues that we're going through as well. Lastly, just wanted to, a lot of people will be fearful of this because it's new, but it's definitely gonna bring transparency to the city as a whole, bridging the gap from the council to our management and to our frontline workers, to allow us to bring more quality hire resources to our citizens. Appreciate it. Thank you.
At that time, that is all the speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I would like to say...
We'll do discussion in a minute. Let's, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Long?
I would like to say, this has been a time period since 2020 for the state legislation finally coming down in Newport News. I'm really thankful that city council is even thinking about bringing up this resolution for a task force for collective bargaining, like a lot of people spoke of. This is an opportunity to empower some of our city employees. But this task force will set out the scope of how this potential policy will look for Newport News. So I look forward to, hopefully, I'll be voting for it, so hopefully other council members will join me in voting for the task force.
Thank you.
Request for the floor, Mayor Jones.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
First off, I want to say thank you all for coming out. I want to give a big shout out to Councilman Cleon Long and the mayor for bringing this to our attention. I think, simply put, I will support this tonight. I do think, to share with the same comments, that if we do have a task force, it should include folks, workers, or union reps, just because we truly believe in transparency here. And so I just want to put that, put that out there. But at the same time, I think it's also an opportunity for us to assess the culture as a whole across the city. And so, Mr. Manager, I just hope that we use this opportunity to thoroughly assess and see how we can continue to put the workers first, and make sure that their voice is heard, for sure. So again, I will support this tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Councilman Ely.
I just want to second the motion.
Oh, move the second. Thank you. Is there any other comments? Then I would just echo, just thank you to Councilman Long for co-sponsoring this tonight. Thank you to all the brothers and sisters who came out. We appreciate you, as well as Delegate Ward, who snuck in the back. We always appreciate you, ma'am. At that time, let's call the roll, please.
Councilman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Mulberry?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So at this, at this time... So at this time, at this time, if you wanted to part, feel free to do that now before we start with E1. So if you're not going to stay, feel free to leave. Thank you.
Quick recess. I'm gonna sit down. Get some more water. All right.
Here, use mine. We were going to go ahead and push on to E1. Public hearing, page five. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease agreement between the city of Newport News and Amtrak for a portion of city-owned property located at 500 Bravo Bland Boulevard. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 42. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of 30th Street Right Of Way located between Wickham Avenue and Orchid Avenue for the Southeast Community Resource Area Project. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that I appreciate this going forward to help add the completeness to the southeast resource area, which will...once, it will take some years to come alive, but once it comes alive, it's going to be such a transformation and a transformational area in the South District. So I really appreciate this, hopefully moving forward tonight.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 47. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance closing and vacating 127,500 square feet of right-of-way and 49,000 square feet of alleys located between Wickham Avenue and Orchid Avenue from 28th Street to 35th Street for the Southeast Community Resource Area Project. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 52. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sales or condemnation portions of property for the Briarfield Sidewalk, Marshall and Chestnut Project. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Manager, I just want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. The sidewalks at Briarfield Marshall has been something that I have, that has been on my agenda as I'm finishing up 16 years this year, but it shows in government how long some things take, but you have to continue to have the fortitude to keep it in the forefront of what it will mean in a certain area. And for this, particularly around the Heritage High School area and with the fire department, it will make it more walker-friendly and safe for those citizens and the young people in that area.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 78. Item E5 is a request to adopt an ordinance releasing and vacating a portion of existing sanitary sewer easement across property located at 5401 City Line Road for the Gravity Sewer Rehab Project. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 82. Item E6 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to tower a teachment lease between the city of Newport News, Virginia and the David Ingle Ministry Church for the continued use, maintenance, installation of equipment on the ground air transmission site tower located at 100 Tower Lane, Yorktown, Virginia. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page 96. Item E7 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code Chapter Two, Administration Article Two, City Council Division One, Period Generally Section Two dash 31, salaries. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Kathy Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kathy Williams. I'm here with Lee Breeland. We wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all for the appointment to co-chair the Charter Review Committee. We know this is very important work. We take it very seriously, and so we just wanted to take this time to thank you all. In addition to that, Lee will be talking in support of the ordinance proposal.
So our first task is to give our full support for the salary increase for both the mayor and the members of City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edwin Whitehead. Apologies if that's...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. My name is Edwin Whitehead. I am a Virginian by choice and happy transplant, and my goal today is to speak to you all about good governance, the governance that ensures that the essence of your duty is to serve and better the quality of life of every single one of your constituencies in this room and across the entire city of Newport News. The best way to ensure that good governance is to be as transparent and open as possible in involving every single individual in that process in a participatory way to help them truly understand what it looks like they're spending their tax dollars on, every single solitary penny. They deserve nothing less than that. Every worker that was just in here, they deserve nothing less than that. Every person that's already served and will continue to do so deserve nothing less than that. The only way to ensure that proper governance is that community input. And so my ask of you all is to simply table this ordinance to go forth and speak to your constituencies as a whole in each of your districts and schedule and say, make sure that every single person from corner to corner, from street to street in your districts, line to line, have a full understanding of what they're spending their money on and to really see that you truly deserve the raise that you're asking for. I believe that you all do. Sometimes those individuals don't. There are some individuals who may doubt that. My goal is to ask you all to table this and reassure those individuals that it's exactly what you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bakira Shabazz.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Bakira Shabazz. I'm a native of Newport News, Virginia, and I really love my city. Regardless of where I go, I'm always going to see Newport News first. And so my organization, the Injustice Reform Network, is an organization that prides itself on oversight, and we happen to be looking at the budget for Newport News, and we became very concerned about a lot of the salaries that were paid out to a lot of the city workers. And when this issue came up, we were not against it. However, we wanted to make sure that there was a process that Newport News residents really understood where their money was going and also had the opportunity to participate in that decision-making. When we have folks that are making well over $200,000 for a city the size of Newport News, that really raised the eyebrow for us, especially when we're needing that money to be allotted in other areas like education. We have a former teacher in our organization that just, I wouldn't say quit her job, but she definitely is no longer a teacher. And salary had a lot to do with that, being a very seasoned teacher of nine years in the city of Newport News, and that really concerns us. And so when we're looking at salaries and compensation increases, we want to make sure that it is a participatory process where we can have a town hall meeting and look at the full budget and make sure those that want to be involved is completely involved in that process. And so although we are not against it, we're asking for tabling of that at this time in order to have full-time hall meetings about the budget for the city of Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephen Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor.
City council members.
Good evening.
I, Steve Ferguson, live at 200 Parkway Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I would encourage the City Council to table or vote no on this ordinance. As you well are aware, that we are...Newport News has the highest property tax on the peninsula. We currently have the highest meal tax in the country, and to add tax burden to our citizens with the inflationary needs that they need to spend their money elsewhere, I understand that this raise is only a blip in the map of a $1.00 nearly $2 trillion, a billion-dollar budget, but this would show the citizens of Newport News that you care about their tax rate and increasing their tax rate. I think we can encourage the City Council to maybe study and use this fund to benefit the taxpayer or the city employees. So I would encourage you to table or vote no.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Against.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page ninety-nine, minutes of the special meeting of June twenty-third, 2023. Page one-twenty-three, minutes of the work session of June eleventh, 2024. Page one-fifty-one, minutes of the regular meeting of June eleventh. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items F-one through F-three, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page one-seventy-five, item G-two, Mr. Manager.
Item G-two is a request to adopt an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Thirty-first Street, right-of-way located between Wickham Avenue and Orchid Avenue for the Southeast Community Resource Area Project. The closure of this portion of Thirty-first Street is essential for the Southeast Community Resource Area's development, including the new Huntington Middle School and Huntington Center. It will facilitate parking access for vehicles and buses, ensuring safe student drop-off and pickup. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say for this, as we, if it moves forward tonight, to make sure that we are, you know, making the community aware of the changes by any additional signage that we need to bring clarity to different, different transportation ways for the citizens during this time, because people have lived in the area so long and have been used to a certain pattern.
Mr. Mayor, for clarity, we're on item G-two.
G-two.
I believe, Alan, did you read E-two?
We did do E-two and G-one. We moved G-one to the front.
Right. No, no, but I believe Alan just read E-two, not G-two. Did you not?
So for clarification, it is item, it is item G-two?
G-two is the...
Opioid settlement?
The opioid settlement?
Yeah.
Opioid settlement.
Well.
We will pause for the right one.
Resolution for the...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thanks, Bob. Alan, if you want, I can just read it from what I have.
Mr. Mayor, it appears that I do not have...
No worries. I'll read this. So we have page seventy, one-seventy-five, item G-two. It's a resolution approving the city's participation in a proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Kroger and related corporate entities, and it directs the city attorney to execute the document necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one-seventy-eight, item G-three, Mr. Manager.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Just one second. I want to make sure that my ordering is not impacted the next item. G-three. G-three. The city of Newport News and the city of Williamsburg have an agreement from April first, 2009, for water supply. The first payment was due and paid when the agreement was signed, with the second payment due on June thirtieth, 2024. Williamsburg has requested a one-year extension to assess future water needs based on a utility master plan. Without the extension, their water usage would be limited to 1 million gallons per day. The city managers and city attorneys of both cities support extending the due date to June thirtieth, 2025, as allowed by the agreement, which remains unchanged. And I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to ask, what, have they made any payments so far?
Yes, they have. They made the first payment.
So they are up to date?
Yes, and asked for an extension, which has been mutually agreed by, by both, both cities.
Okay.
To allow them to fully assess their water needs. Otherwise, they would be limited to the existing water supply as defined by the agreement that was entered into. So they would like this additional extension to reassess their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one-eighty-two, item G-four, Mr. Manager.
Item G-four is a request to adopt a resolution endorsing the city's applications for fiscal years 2026, 2027, and 2028, Virginia Department of Transportation's Smart Scale Program and Six-Year Improvement Plan grant funds for the following projects. Jefferson Avenue Improvements, Jefferson Avenue and J. Clyde Morris Boulevard Intersection Improvements, Strategically Targeted Affordable Roadway Solutions Study and Warwick Boulevard and Colony Road Intersection Improvements. If approved, the projects will be included in the Grant Funding Line item of the Streets and Bridges category for the FY 2026, 2027, and 2028 Capital Improvements Plan. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one-ninety, item G-five, Mr. Manager.
Item G-five is a request to adopt an ordinance accepting the streets and public improvements in the Hertzler Meadows subdivision into the city's street system. Final inspection was completed of the required improvements, and the subdivision complies with all their requirements. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one-ninety-five, item G-six, Mr. Manager.
Item G-six is a resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to include the streets in the Hertzler Meadows subdivision, Phases Two, Three, and Four, for maintenance payments, purposes in the street maintenance inventory. The streets have been constructed to the standards required by the state and are eligible for state maintenance funds. The net change requested in this resolution will increase the inventory by point seven-five miles. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Page one-ninety-nine, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have six appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $794,920 of fiscal year FY 2023 grant funds from the Virginia Department Environmental Quality Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Grant Program for the Governor Drive Stream Restoration and BPM Project. The city is restoring 770 feet of eroded stream channel near East Governor Drive and Riverview Farm Road using natural channel design techniques and adding a constructed wetland BMP to control runoff. The project aims to stabilize the bank and manage stormwater to prevent future erosion and property loss. H-two is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $400,000 in state revenue to fiscal year 2025 to support the STEM partnership between Virginia Peninsula Community College and the city of Newport News. Virginia Peninsula Community College and the city of Newport News collaborate through the Kova STEM Hub to enhance STEM literacy, education, and career pathways in the region. Funded by the Virginia General Assembly, the Virginia Peninsula Community College receives $500,000 annually to support this partnership. The additional appropriated funds of $400,000 for FY 2025 to Kova STEM Hub for STEM enrichment aims to foster a diverse STEM workforce and an inclusive community practice. H-three, or the fourth appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $8,000, $800,000 from the community development category of the fiscal year 2024 bond authorization in support of economic development projects. This appropriation, along with previously appropriated funds, will support the strategic acquisition of 11006 Warwick Boulevard, currently owned by the Newport News Economic Development Authority. This acquisition will provide approximately 19.5 acres of assemblage that supports the goals of the Greater Hilton Area Plan. H-four, the fourth appropriation, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million of fiscal year 2024 bond authorization public buildings category for the design and construction phase of the new court complex master plan project. Recent legislative changes have resulted in more jury trials, and the existing courthouse does not have enough courtrooms to adapt to the demand. The new building will enable the old buildings to either be repurposed or demolished. H-five is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $5,500,000 of fiscal year 2024 bond authorization public buildings category for the design and construction phase of the municipal building. Due to recent legislative changes, the Newport News Circuit Courts are currently facing a backlog of jury trials due to the lack of sufficient space to conduct these trials. As a result, it is necessary to renovate the municipal building located at 23025th Street to increase the number of courtrooms. Renovations include the addition of two new courtrooms, judges' chambers, administrative offices, fore witness rooms, interview rooms, jury waiting rooms, jury deliberation rooms, restrooms, and other necessary areas of the facility. H-six, or the sixth appropriation this evening, is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $11,973,754 of fiscal year 2025 Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Grant Program funds for the citywide pedestrian safety improvements project, which includes pedestrian crossing improvements for approximately 79 locations at intersections throughout the city of Newport News. The project primarily focuses on installing or upgrading pedestrian buttons and signals at existing crossings, which may also involve updating ramps to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
Motion to approve item H-one through H-six, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to know about any additional funding on the municipal, the public, the two additional courtrooms. Will there be state money for that? Will there be additional money for us?
There's, there's no additional money that I am, that I'm aware of. But Craig, you can, I know I saw you shaking your head, but are you aware of any additional funding sources for this project?
No, at this time, I'm not aware of any additional funds for that right now. That's all we've got.
Thank you.
Well, even if you're not aware, will there be any additional information coming to us in reference to that, in reference to getting the additional...
No, this is, this is the cost that we have right now that for, we're actually going to be in the design phase of that right now to get that finished.
Okay.
So when that finishes, or the estimate, we're right now, that's all the funding we have for that. We're not anticipating any additional funds for it.
It seems to me that there should be some funding from other sources when we're ready to move forward.
We, we have explored at least one that I'm very familiar with, and we, we received information that the project did not qualify, and we were positioned to submit this to our congressional delegation as potentially, as a potential earmark project. But it unfortunately didn't meet the Appropriations Committee requirements, so it had to be withdrawn. But there have been a number of discussions regarding this additional burden that the city finds itself in due to inadequate space. But as a result of legislation, statewide legislation, but unfortunately, I'm not aware of any other funding sources at this time.
I would urge you to continue to look since there's...
Sure.
You know.
Share costs with the state.
Yes, I would think so.
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion at this time from city council? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item I, citizen comments. I will call each name in the order that appears in front of me. Dr. Erva Joan Scott. And then Angela Trotter will be next.
Good evening, Mayor and city council.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of things. First of all, I implore you for the task force. You're going to be exciting, and it's a good thing to do. So I applaud you for that. And I also thank you for the work that you're doing to, your analyzation of the salaries and breaking them down. I was sitting in that meeting, and I thought, wow, that is great. Well, I'm here before you tonight just to introduce myself as a new, new, new upcoming businesswoman here in the city of Newport News. I reside at 2614 Wickham, but my office is in the new approved 2506, two, what is it, second and, two-five and J. That's a lot to say. Two-five and J building. And I am in the wonderful world of travel. And one of the initiatives that we are kicking off this year is to bring about a resolution into the school systems, into every faucet where there are children and where there are people, to take them out of the city to broaden their horizon. We believe if we're going to fight crime, it's got to start with something new and something different. And to kick that off, I have a trip going to DC this month in honor of Juneteenth and Fourth of July. I would like to give you some information so that you can start helping me spread it through this wonderful city. And we plan to do a thorough sweep of the city with the school systems, with all the powers that be. And I will be coming before you, hopefully for some funds. I don't own buses yet, but I do hope to. My greatest admiration is to be able to take the bus to an inner city under privilege and say, get on the bus, and we're going to take you to see the city. So thank you. I'm Erva Joan Scott. Grapp opportunity traveler, here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Angela Trotter and then Clayton Ty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Trotter. My address at the time is 749 Warwick Boulevard at the Adult Daycare Center. I have been homeless since April third. My highest level of education is a Bachelor of Science degree. I currently work at our Father Arp Corporation through the senior citizens. I ended up in this position in April as a single parent, going through your CHINs program with mentally ill family member. I have been down there. I have been requesting certain things. That never happens. I have called to your Housing Crisis Center. I have called to United Way. I have called all over Salvation Army. I have called to the Hampton Community. Actually, I've actually went down there, and I've gone down there to the Link. We are running around like rats in a circle, looking for housing. At this time, I do make minimal wage. It is tough, very tough. Since the administrator down there and the director has not listened to a lot of our requests, that's how I end up here tonight, hoping that you would listen to somebody from the homeless. We feel ignored. So we feel as though the buck stops at her desk. So here I am, speaking to you, asking for much-needed help. It would be nice if she would interact more with her patrons, which simply shows concern for the patrons on a personal level. I, like other patient, like other patrons down there, would like to present early to the Four Oaks Adult Center and get a shower, go to my locker, eat a pastry, and get down the street to work or take care of other personal business. Myself and others have encountered multiple obstacles preventing us from being a productive citizen. There are things like down there, there, when you call after we get off of work, those of us that are working, there are no social workers. They're all gone home. So we have to make a decision to either miss work or be without, speak with a social worker. And it's just not there at the adult center down there. There was, there was a social workers down here at the Link that was dealing with the housing situation in February. When I call there now, there are no social workers.
City clerk, can you add two minutes?
So... We need a drive to hire more social workers, from the CHINs program to the housing program to even adult protective services. We need more social workers. Even if, any kind of incentive to retain social workers.
And ma'am, we doubled the time, but we'll make sure you can stay in this time limit. I want to make sure you have your time.
Okay. Also, down there, the laborers down there at the center, they have, well, the center always already have limited staff, limited. And they are overwhelmed from walking back and forth. If it's the locker run, if it's cleaning the showers, which is, have a lot of mold into it. So the health department really needs to come down there and take a look at it. So I understand that at the first of the year, there was a lot of, there was restrictions and codes for landlords to fix up their places. I understand that. Most people do understand that. But there should have been a Plan B, an aggressive Plan B, coming out of COVID, knowing that we have a housing crisis here. People are running around looking for things, and it's not there. It's just not there. Things that you're advertising is really not there in place. When we go down to churches and pick up food from the bank, yes, they'll give you some meat, raw meat. They'll even give you some, a good head of cabbage. But if you're really, if you're really homeless, where are you going to cook this food at? Where are you going to cook the food at? There's no microwaves to put them in. There's no microwaves anywhere. Not even down there at the adult center. So hopefully, I'm asking you, can you please donate some, 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 some microwaves down there so we can at least bring food in and microwave the food?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, we'll, I will, someone will come talk to you right now, and then we'll, someone on council will come talk to you right after, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll meet you after council.
Councilman Long will come meet you, ma'am.
Ma'am.
All right, Ms. Angela, just Councilman Long will come meet you after this. Thank you. Yeah, and Ginger is going to come as well. Clayton Ty, and then just, and then Chanel Catchmore.[1708.42]
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
Congratulations on obtaining the All America City Award. The work the community and city staff has done to accomplish this is recognized and appreciated. I am proud to see us identified as a national model for strong democratic principles. I have the pleasure of serving this city on the Human Services Advisory Board, and it strengthens my belief that change is possible for a more just and equitable community. In the spirit of the award, strengthening democracy through transparency and innovation, I would like the following actions to be prioritized by council. Inclusion of relevant boards and commissions in studies that require community engagement, such as the recently awarded RFP for consultant services to complete a homelessness study. Now, as detailed by the previous speaker, it's very much needed in this moment in our city. Collective bargaining rights for city employees, the creation of a funded civilian oversight board with subpoena authority to investigate allegations of police misconduct, a policy requiring public comment both online and in person, be appended to the minutes of the reference public meeting, and a policy requiring Freedom of Information Act request to be published and maintained in the city's Request Public Archive. I believe these changes to be democratic, transparent, and in keeping with good governance. Hopefully, the enactment and presentation of these changes will set us up for success in 2025. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chanel Ketchmore, then Alan Tanner, and then Cavante Artes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city manager. Chanel Ketchmore with Ketchmore Kids. First, I wanted to start, Councilman Long, we recently received a large donation from Walmart, like two truckloads full of items, including microwaves, different things. So if there is truly that need there, then we would be able to readily assist with that. In a moment, you all will hear about some of our progress. I wanted to share, though, that a lot of the work that we do is not easily quantifiable. Even when we have a great day in our city and no one has been killed by gun violence, there are still shootings that take place where no one was injured. There are families who we've helped move into hotels because their home was shot up. There are fights that are happening, a lot of situations that we are intervening and being proactive, literally a lot of fires that we are, that we are putting out. So when you see young people with us, and especially if they have a Ketchmore Kids shirt on, these are young people who could have been a statistic, and we are helping to change the narrative and the trajectory of their lives, and we truly appreciate the support that you all have provided to us to allow us to continue to do that in this fiscal year and previous years. And I am already advocating for funding for future years to come. This is, this is a challenge, you know, and having successful years is also important to understand that this challenge is not alleviated so quickly when you have decades upon decades of a challenge that you're working against. So it takes time for this to be sustainable and to maintain it. But again, thank you for everything and all the investment, and we have our Ketchmore Kids Family Day, third annual, coming up on August 4th. We're going through the official proper channels to invite each of you. We are inviting all of the funded programs and other programs as well to join us because this is for all of us in our city, so we would love for you to be there. And if there is any discretionary or contingency funds that the city has that may assist with our overhead, just because I'm not aware of that process, if anyone can direct me, it's a free event, and, you know, we show up so many times when things have gone bad and a tragedy has happened. So this really allows us to bring the community together and to bond and do all of those things and to create positive memories. So any direction, you know, that I can get for that would be helpful, and thank you once again for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Tanner, and then Cavante Artes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I was home with my grandchildren a couple hours ago, and I turned on the news, and I saw the Seaview Office was in the news again today, and it made me think of the task at hand for us and the general, the generational opportunity we have here in Newport News to do something very, very special for our community and our region. As you know, and you've attended many of the meetings surrounding the Navy needs for housing and quality of life issues here, I submit to you that reaching out to the private sector, the private community, to assist the city in constructing the buildings and the housing and the various entities that need to cooperate together to make this the world's greatest harbor. That's what was all intended way back when, and we have a shot at it one more time, and this is the shot. You've got the, our government wants this changed immediately. We need to work expeditiously and rely on the private sector. I have started what is called the Good News Project. I have created the Ops Zone Fund of America to invite investors from all over this country to invest here in Newport News to advance this project. Give us the chance. Let us have a voice. Do not do this in a silo. Let the people help decide what happens with our great city, and especially the downtown area and the southeast community. They have the most at stake. They've got a lot of challenges in both of those communities. We've just heard from the homeless issues here. They're very prevalent in those areas in downtown. We want to help. We want to be a part of this city's development and take it into the next century. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Cavante Artes.
Sorry, if I'd known you were, I would have done you that before, Tanner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
My name is Cavante Artes. I am 18, and I represent Ketchmore Kids. I met Ketchmore Kids when there was working inside the Juvenile Attendance Center, not too long ago, but I've stayed connected with them since I came home. I am working, and I plan on going to the military, AKA the Air Force, and I just wanted to thank you all for the support of Ketchmore Kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is new business. Before we go to the city manager, I believe the Vice Mayor has a motion.
Yes. I move to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of the City of Newport News, Virginia, Article XXI, Department of Internal Audit. A copy of the ordinance is before you.
Second. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
None, sir. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Harris?
Oh, good evening to everyone. I just want to thank everyone who came out on tonight. I know several people already left out. I would like to thank them for sharing with us on tonight and everything that we were able to hear, and it always helps us to hear from our citizens. Only have one thing I wanted to make sure we had on documented, that we have a tremendous opportunity for some young people here in our city in the North District that are going down to participate in the Junior Olympics on, from Wednesday all the way up until Saturday this past week. It was some hot days out throughout the course of the week, but if you drove past Todd Stadium, you probably saw a lot of cars, a lot of people walking around. We had a state regional qualifier track meet here in our city, which hosted student athletes, coaches, families from all over the state of Virginia, and we had a team in the North District called the Hampton Roads Hurricanes Track Club, who had 46, which is a big deal, 46 young people qualified to participate in the Junior Olympics. I think that's something that we should commend and applaud those young people and the hard work that they've done to represent not just the Virginia, but they represent Newport News, and specifically, they're representing the North District, which makes me even more prouder, because they're going to go down to North Carolina A&amp;T at the end of this month and be able to highlight, showcase their skills, that they've been working hard all throughout the course of the spring, going into the summer, and represent us in that Junior Olympics, which you have people from all over the country that are going to be there. And I'm looking forward to them bringing back gold medals, and hopefully, we can get them here and highlight them like we highlight all of our champions here in the city of Newport News. So congratulations to the Kent family, Hampton Roads Hurricanes Track Club, and looking forward to them bringing back those gold medals, and hopefully, we can get them here once it's all over. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Long?
I just want to say it's glad, glad we were able to have a city council meeting here in the Central District. We've talked about moving around town, so it was a great opportunity. Want to thank everyone that was able to come out and speak. It's always nice to see new faces in the crowd. You know, this conversation is always about transparency, but this is, you know, coming out to city council meetings, watching on TV, online, this is how you can find out what's going on in city government. So it's always great to see new people in the audience. And nothing else other than to say happy summer to everyone out here, and hopefully, you'll have opportunities for some time with friends and family over the summer, all the time. Thanks.
Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, I'd like to first say thank you to, thank you for attending to, my new constituent service representative is here, Ms. Michelle Grant. She just started this week, so I'm so excited to have her. Michelle and I worked together years ago as I was Director of the Peninsula Community Development Corporation, and she was my assistant. So it will be a pleasure to have us join again. We did some amazing things then, and I'm looking forward to more amazing things for our future. And my beautiful daughter, Tiana Shae Vick, is here, and so I want to welcome her. So all my welcomes, but I do have to say, and I won't hold this long because I know that I was late, our youth career program that kicked off on the 22nd at the Demi Community Center with Larry Brunson, the Director of the Brooks Crossing Facility, it was just such a pleasure to see 100-plus children, and what made my heart even warmer to see so many parents who came out to support their children, and knowing the mission of having that team to be able to strengthen their children and build them into more successful adults. But the connectivity of our employers, who were super excited to be there, to know the importance of hiring our children, as we talk about on the Workforce Board and in communication with leadership in the city, how important it is to get our children prepared so that they will want to stay here in Newport News. So it was such an exciting day. The mayor was there, Councilman Ely was there, and so we really had a great time, and just the importance of being able to set those children on the right path was a joy for me. And so that, with that, I just want to tell everyone, happy Fourth of July, and enjoy your holiday weekend, and we will be at the City of Newport News, we will be at the Victory Arch with music and fun and food for the Fourth of July. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Councilman Ely?
I'd like to thank everybody who came up, who came out this evening. Your voices were definitely heard. I also would like to wish a happy birthday to my grandmother, who's no longer with us. Today is her birthday, so I know she's going to have it watching down on me. Also had the opportunity to work with Virginia Peninsula Community College last week. They did a tech camp, and it was just out of this world. The kids was able to visit the FBI lab, they learned how to fly drones, they learned about coding, they went to Brooks Crossing, they made shirts. It was a great free camp that Virginia Peninsula Community College put on, and I was fortunate enough to work with them in that camp. And they also had a cool class on how to become a famous YouTuber in gaming, so the kids really loved that part. I also have the opportunity next week to work with the Achievable Dream, they're doing the arts camp. It's going to be at Achievable Dream as a partnership with Heritage High School as well. It's going to be, so if you have any children that want to sign up for this camp, they have dancing, the choreographer that's worked with the group, he was in the Color Purple. He did a, he did the iPhone new commercial. He also do all the choreography for the NBA, so he's going to be working with the kids. So it's a free camp. They're going to have acting, they're going to have culinary arts, the chef that's worked with them is Chef Jacoby Ponder. He was the winner of Cutthroat Kitchen. So they have a lot of celebrity, and I don't know if you all have heard the TV show called All American. The actor from that show is coming down to work with the kids as well. So they put together a great free camp. It's a total of two weeks. There's about 25 slots still left, so if you have any children that are interested in the arts, please tell them to call Achievable Dream Headquarters and sign your child up for the camp. It's open for seventh to 12th grade students. Also, I'd like to thank Councilman Curtis Bethany. He took us down to Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, to look at that event center. It was amazing. It was good to be with Florence and the rest of the staff to see what could be the possibility of the Demi section of Newport News. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice?
Only comments I have tonight, I just want to say thank you. I think I saw the fire chief head home or head out of here, but point is, I just want to say thank you to him, his amazing department, the police folks who also assisted in the unfortunate accident that happened on the monitor Merrimack. We're grateful for the efficient recovery of the vehicle to bring closure to the families, but the point is, we just want to say thank you for what they did for our community, so, and prayers out to the family and those affected in this tragic loss. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I too want to echo Vice Mayor's comments. We talked to Chief briefly today and the day of the incident, but just the amount of professionalism that his, the fire department shown, it makes me proud to call Newport News home. So just thank you to Chief and to all of his, the men and women that helped pull that vehicle out of the water. Wanted to cover two things briefly. Two, there's been a lot of scuttlebutt and reports when it comes to the airport, and what I'll, what I'll say is this, like, I do not govern by fiat, I don't govern by fear. We govern through stakeholder engagement and by ensuring that we have everyone at the table. And so really excited to talk to the community, to look at our options, but to ultimately make sure that Newport News is still the best place to live, to work, and to raise your families. So we have a lot of work ahead, but I'm bullish on the future of Newport News and excited to work with the city manager as we roll out some things on the airport in the next month or so. And additionally, yesterday was a great day for the city. We were able to talk to a lot of our members of Congress, the governor, and a few members of the Rear Admiral staff. And the goal, the vision of Newport News is to be a center of excellence when it comes to shipbuilding. When you look at the amount of federal dollars from, that was just put in the NDA, we're going to get some marine money, there's going to be carrier money. The goal is to make sure that when we get the next carrier in 2027, that we have the facilities, infrastructure, to make sure that we can engage in great power conflict against all enemies. That is the goal. That, along with ensuring we have the highest quality of life for sailors. So that, plus the money from AUKUS and the Australians and everything that's happening, it's all globalization, everything points to the center of excellence in shipbuilding, in the world being in Newport News, and I'm really proud of that and the entire team. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Oh, I skipped that. I'm, oh. Sorry. I'm 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 sorry.